And then ask.
Say.
You know, she's like, gotta go. I'm like, okay.
The uh.
I don't think.
That'd be more.
It was. Yeah, there was like one hundred fifty thousand people.
Yes, they said.
Peters.
Yeah.
No.
Well, we really. Goes down.
Yeah, the country.
Yeah.
Or in the like.
Yeah, that was not driven. I mean, you're going down. You know, the waters trickling down.
Uh, folks, it's seven thirty. We'll call this meeting to uporder. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance, spirit of the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, take roll.
Mr. Hoff.
Here.
Mr. Cannelli.
Here.
Ms. McGuire. Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so I have a motion for approval of the minutes of May fifth.
Which one? We have two sets.
Uh, the sign die first.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Dattley, seconded by Thomas. Do you have any comments, questions, or edits for the first set of minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All, all in favor, no amaze, the motion passes. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, the second set of minutes of May fifth? So. Moved by Thomas.
Second.
Seconded by Hoff. Any comments, questions, or edits? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we have the president report. It did get organized. It's all written down, folks. Um, actually, first is a civility pledge. Uh, I did not read it last week on my first office as president. I had Ann read it. Thank you. I will read it tonight. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we're all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. All right, last week, or two weeks ago, um, I didn't have much of a voice and we had a lot going on. So for our new, uh, trustees, I just want to extend another welcome to Bill Hoff and Bill Cannelli. We're excited to work with you guys. I like that you coordinated your outfits tonight. Our coach. Allers, Jessma. Uh, a few things. I, have, have you guys received a key yet, or did I drop the ball on that?
I dropped the key.
Okay. We will get that taken care of. I know that today, uh, Pat Gungian from the West Dundee, Village of West Dundee, she emailed me. She may have emailed both of you on your sleepyhallowillinois.org email address about voicemails. Did you guys get those yet?
I have an email that's been set up.
Didn't get anything from her today.
Okay. I'll follow up with you guys tomorrow and just check in on that. Make sure we've got that squared away. The key will give you access to the building as well as the trustee room, which I didn't have access to the trustee room my first two years. It was a mix-up.
We can wait.
I thought I was fired.
I got a call from.
Either from for the voice.
Okay, good. Um, so also, so there's a few, uh, organizations that are really helpful for not just newly elected officials, but also for Kelly, Steve, Jenny, wherever you are. Uh, I didn't mean it that way, just, she's listening. Uh, it's the Illinois Municipal League. It's I M L dot org. They have a wonderful newly elected officials guide, as well as videos and tutorials. Uh, there's some quick, short twenty-minute, twelve to twenty-minute ones, as well as sixty-minute ones. They were instrumental my first year being on the board, so I recommend taking a look at that, especially just transitioning from business and trying to learn the governance steps that we take.
Okay.
Uh, the second group organization is called Metro West. And that's the Council of Government.
Those are two different ones?
No, Metro West Council of Government. It's one floor. And that represents thirty-eight municipalities in King, Kendall, and DeKalb. Um, and they have, and they just help with legislative issues and help with lobbying to our state representatives and just coordinating between our municipalities, and especially being smaller. It's helpful to have that kind of, uh, networking and connections, especially with other small municipalities. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can learn.
Hmm.
Uh, there is a training on June fourteenth. It's a Saturday from eight AM to two PM. It is open to new officials, Stephen Kelly. It's also open to previously elected, or current officials. June fourteen.
Forty.
And that's a Saturday, so eight to it is in Lyle. Uh, there is a registration fee and we need to do that soon, but that would be covered by the village. So if you're interested, just let me know. I'll send out an email this week just to follow up with you guys, if anybody's interested, so we can get you registered.
Do they have a second training at all, or anything?
It doesn't seem like it, but a lot of their stuff is, is available online, or I can get PowerPoints. Well, actually, this is, yeah, this is the training.
Okay.
The other two large trainings that we need to focus on right now are OMA, Open Meetings Act, and the FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. Both of these are required to do training within thirty days of office, so we have till the end of the month. It is all available online. Um, and I, it's a long address, so I will send that to you. But basically, we're going to the illinoisattorneygeneral.gov site, and then they also have not only a log on to a portal to do the training, but then resources.
End of this month.
We have to have this done by the end of the month, yes. I will send a link as well as a reminder of the dates, and then a couple reminders just towards the end. Or I will send it to Tony and he will distribute. You're still on to the end of May.
You can also find it at I M L dot org. They have a link right there. Just go, go to their website, click on it, and you'll be right to the site that you need to get to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. What was the first one again you said?
OMA, Open Meetings Act.
Oh, no, it was, uh, the four Metro West.
I M L, Illinois Municipal League.
Thank you.
Hmm. All right. Uh, additionally, I had some good conversations with Attorney Schuster, and he wanted me to remind anybody that we, when acting as trustees, and I'll get to this in a second, but the primary role you're playing is as liaison, so fact-finding, getting information, coming back, reporting to your colleagues, the trustees, and myself. That being said, when you are encountering a resident or a government official or business, whomever, if anybody is to say anything along the lines of lawsuit, or they want to sue the village, you are not a private resident at that time, politely just end the conversation, say, I'm sorry, I need to refer this to the village president, and she will refer it to the village attorney. At that point, we need to stop any communication, as much as you may be tempted to want to try and reconcile something. Please bring it to my attention immediately. All right.
No interest.
I heard muttering.
I have no interest in getting into that.
Um. All right. Last week, our planning and zoning meeting was canceled due to a personal matter with one of our members. I'd just like to ask the community to give us a little patience. We're getting some coverage for them and working that out over the next month, so just consider them one of your family and just give them a little grace and patience, but we will have coverage for anybody who wants to start moving forward with projects. We will get that squared away. Um, which leads me, I got lots of outreach from the residents as soon as I took office. Thank you. Uh, with respect to complaints about your neighbors, we will get to that in due time. Um, there are some drainage issues. There are other just code enforcement issues. We, as a board, are going to be working on getting some more regular code enforcement at, by the end of the summer, reaching, meeting with Jeff Leck, meeting with the chief, and we'll get something, uh, more streamlined for everybody to know what we're going to focus on with code enforcement. Another common question that came up had to do with one thousand one West Main. That's the old Maxway Motors and future Palomino Banquets. I've spoken to Barb as well as Agada, and right now they're just going through some employment staffing issues. That's what part of the delay is. They're trying to get that squared up, and I'm setting up a meeting with Agada by the end of the month to see their progress and if what they're, how they're going to proceed in the, in the summertime. Um, almost done. Appointments. So I was able to appoint all the trustees at the last meeting. Uh, we've made a lot of progress on the clerk and deputy clerk. There's a few candidates, so we're figuring that all out, as well as anybody who's interested in communications. There have been a lot of volunteers, people who'd like to participate. So we're just figuring out schedules and how we all get along. Uh, we also are. Okay, so this is where my other conversation with, uh, Attorney Schuster. In appointing two trustees to each of the committee positions, effectively according to our code, every single trustee liaison position has a committee already formed underneath it. We only utilize the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Finance Committee, those are the only two that we're currently using. Uh, I will be creating or calling it actually the Building and Environment Committee. And this is going to be a brief, quick introduction to Open Meetings Act. If there are just two of you and there is no committee, that means that the committee of Roads and Parks consists of you and Kelly as your second chair. According to Open Meetings Act, you two can never speak outside of that meeting about that business because you, your committee is only made up of two. Whereas Bill, who's on the Finance Committee, he'd be lead chair, Jenny would be his second, but they also have at least five committee members there. That would make a committee of seven. According to Open Meetings Act, you can have, you can have one less than the quorum requirement. So in this case of seven, it's, your quorum is four. You cannot have three members of, it's a quorum of the quorum, that's it. That will be explained in your training. Long story short, Bill and Kelly, you guys, no. Bill and the environment person cannot talk unless there's a committee in existence. Bill Hoff and Jenny McGuire, because it's not a water and sewage committee, wouldn't be able to talk. And same here, everybody's missing one committee. So I'm going to re, I'm going to take a look at that again, because my whole purpose of adding two was to get more back and forth and communal working between the trustees. So I'm going to look into that. In the meantime, don't talk to your opposites, please. Sorry, I'll get that squared away very quickly. Uh, which then for my residents and their neighbors, please let everybody know, we, and actually Pete, after your speech last two weeks ago, seeing people get, get people encouraged, or get people engaged, active, and feedback. We do need people on the committees. Uh, it's volunteer position. Some of the meetings are only quarterly a year. Uh, some are a little more frequent. The environmental one will be larger because we're organizing all of that, but there's a lot of opportunities. If you know anybody who's interested, now's the time to just send me a text, an email, anything, just let me know so I can reach out to them and we can get people involved. All right, um. Volunteer opportunities, um. Oh, and last to announce is we will be setting up a town hall meeting this summer. It is, it will be to, to be, to be determined, ideally probably a weekend, and it will be more of an open back and forth conversation to get the residents in, give the board a chance to talk, not talk back, but converse with, uh, the people in the audience. All right, so that is the end of my president's report. Um, clerk report.
Uh, following up, uh, two points that, uh, President Bo mentioned. Now, I M L dot org training site is, it's key to what, what, uh, she's all been laying out to you in terms of, uh, Open Meetings Act and FOIA and a host of other, uh, training requirements and, and educational opportunities. When you get, uh, when you take the OMA training and the FOIA training, or actually any training, you will be given an opportunity to have a certificate printed out. Print out that certificate and bring it to the, to the village hall to give it to the clerk. Because it maintains a record of all, of all you happy folks and how much you've progressed over time. Or the lack thereof. And, uh, uh, so that's very important, very important. I'm just looking at Bill and I'm sorry. I didn't, but no, no, I got a really good bill. Uh, so, uh, but, uh, uh, those are very, uh, key. There are, there are other requirements that the state is talking about, uh, in ethics, uh, class, a variety of other classes like that. Uh, please, please go out of your way, uh, take your time to, uh, enjoy the training. They're not, they're not hard. They're usually less than a half an hour max. And that includes the, the, the testing portion. Uh, the clerk does not get a record of your test, uh, score. It's just a record of the fact that you completed the testing.
Um. No charges against this, doing it right?
No, but your mouth will zap you if you get the wrong answer.
Uh, but, uh, no, other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Uh, Barb, oh, there's Barb. Barb, do you have a planning and zoning report?
No report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Schuster is not here. As I said, we spoke earlier. We're good, so no attorney report. Uh, Jeff Steele is not here for the engineer report, but actually that'll come up under other. Won't want me to hear.
No.
Okay. Uh, we'll get to the street program. Actually. This is different.
Yeah, it's the same one.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Then we'll get to the street plan on, under Old Business. All right, uh, Eugene, the finance report.
Have a request, uh, need a motion for the warrants in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and five cents.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Um, moved by Hoff, seconded by Thomas, to pass the warrants or to
To approve the.
To approve the warrants of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and five cents. Any comments, questions, or? That's it. Any comments or questions? All right. No discussion, please.
Um, as I was looking through the, uh, some of the financial documents, are our employees, are they paid by monthly?
By week, week.
Okay, so every other week. Let me see. And then is the police department under that a code of PD?
Yes.
Uh, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, overall call please.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Cannelli.
Aye.
Mr. Hoff.
Aye.
Four votes in favor, zero against. The motion passes. All right, and now we have comments for the public. Mr. Vernon, please.
Shirtless.
You won off me nicely.
All right. So just on a few points. One, we've been through the last couple of years, quite a bit of drama and a lot of residents with anguish over a zoning code and the self-storage as a permitted special use. Um, there's been questions about how that was brought into being and so forth. I'm not going to go into all that. However, I think at this point, we're pretty well determined it's not a good fit for Sleepy Hollow, and I would ask the board to revisit the zoning code specifically and make this a prohibited use. That's first item. Now, next is, uh, we're all starting off fresh here. Uh, best of my knowledge and belief, all our contracted outsourced services have been with us for twenty years. Is that about right? Thereabouts.
Contracted?
Oh, sorry. Contracted services. Attorney, engineer, building and zoning, okay? And in my experience of municipalities, this is typically something that gets reviewed, and I know it's been discussed, looking over where all these services are. Uh, but to review that situation. Review that situation every, well, you look at it every year, but you really get close to it every two years and consider it R F P. Doing a couple of things to make sure everybody's pencil is still sharp when they're giving you a number. And your quality of service is sustained. Now, well, okay, that's. That's pretty much all I'm going to say about that one at this point. And then finally. Uh, I know there's uh. Uh, Ms. Detmer has submitted the proposed fee schedule update. And I gave it a quick look and I was comparing that to our neighbors over in. West Dundee, East Dundee and Carpentersville. And we're looking at a significant difference in, you know, I just took a few of these. I didn't go through each line item. We've got some significant differences. Now, I appreciate as a contractor, this is a cost of doing business. However. Uh, we're looking at, for example, the debt, two hundred dollars versus fifty dollars. Three hundred dollars for a roof versus. Fifty and in case of Carpenter'sville, it's like twenty dollars. Sidewalks, things of this nature. They're also looking at fifty dollars. Let's look at that very closely. You know, where we are in our fee structure.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Uh, these are actually some issues that we have considered, and so I would like to reach out to you this week to follow up with you on some of it. That's okay.
I'm sure could you speed up just that much?
What's that? I'll speak up. Uh, these are all actually some issues that we've been looking at, so I would like to reach out to you this week and follow up with you to discuss.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, no other public comments? Trustee reports, uh, roads, parks and streets, Mister Canelli.
Okay, so I have a few things to share, um. The uh issue that the trustee McGuire brought up about the beavers, um, I went and visited with the resident on Surrey. And uh spent some time touring the issue. Um, it's got a beautiful piece of property. And um, it does back up to um, what appears to be an easement. The sign is says it's property of Sleepy Hollow and on the other side of that easement, if you will, it is um. Uh, Dundee Township. So uh, the problem is just started to occur this year with. We believe three different beavers that decided to make homes there or dams. And when the uh, when the beavers have completed their construction, it does uh flood up into his yard, probably. Maybe ten or fifteen feet. Uh, and his concern is that it's going to get into a septic and then he could have other, other issues. Um, he is a, a really a, a great guy. And he understands that it's, you know, his kind of it's his issue because of where he lives. But he's just wanted to um. See if there's any help that could be provided. Uh, he has a torn rotator cuff, so when he goes out and takes the dams apart himself. Uh, it's a, it's a challenge. So I told him that I was going to look into um. Some potential options, including talking to the um. Um, Dundee Township, see if they can help out somehow and um, I will get, get back with him. Um, who's the resident? Do we say their names?
No.
No.
I don't know.
Yeah, so he's up on Surrey. Um, and uh, also when I was stopped by Public Works the other day. Eugene and I were talking and we noticed that somebody built a dam out here in the creek. And if they was with rocks, it was, it was done nicely, but it caused the water to stagnate and everything um north. Just kind of gets stagnant and so that's not helping the aquatic life. And so uh Kyle did take it apart. Uh, actually they built two dams with, with rocks and boulders that were there. So that's been taken care of. Um. Public Works has completed all the mulching um of the, the mulch that they had purchased. And uh, as of last week, just so people know, they've already um. Cut all their grass five times. So pretty busy uh spring for them.
I would also like to point out, I just learned today. It's National Public Works Week. This week, so sorry that Kyle's not here, but we'd all like to thank Kyle and Tyler and.
Dylan.
Dylan, thank you. I always want to say Damien, uh, all of their hard work. Uh, also Bill, I will, let's talk this week and see if we can't coordinate with Dundee Township. Uh, just to see. We'll get a conversation between the three of us so we can coordinate for that residence for the beaver situations.
He told me he'd be happy to keep us posted as they, as they come back and do their thing.
All right. I'll put up some trail cameras.
He loves the animals, so he doesn't want to see them hurt.
Okay.
He did put out a live trap and unfortunately he caught, which was given to him by D N R.
Yeah.
And unfortunately he caught a raccoon, um, without a beaver. So he was, he was a little worried about, but that guy loses.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
All right, moving on to finance, um, Bill.
Uh, I guess they'll order a business. We'll refer to.
Um, because we've had a change in the board and we um, don't have the official signers currently. So we, we need two resolutions for the two banks that we um. Mainly use. So uh, that we have additional signers on.
Uh, these signers would be myself, the president, Eugene Van, the finance director. Bill Hoff as the first chair trustee for finance and Jennifer McGuire is the second chair trustee for finance. Um, do I have a motion?
You want to do the solid ones or do you want to do it separately?
I would like to, they're the same.
One is River Bank and the other one is St. Charles, which is resolution three and four.
Resolution. Yes, I'd like a motion for both resolutions, three and four. Designating signatories for the accounts at St. Charles State Bank and First American Bank. Vote on motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Uh, moved by Hoffs, seconded by Thomas. Any comments, questions or discussion? Hearing none, uh. All the, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mister Canelli.
Yay. Hey.
Aye.
Miss Thomas.
Uh, yay, aye. I'll follow.
Or we could do thumbs up. Mister Dattley.
Aye.
Mister Hopp.
Aye.
For affirmative note against, motion passes. I will sign this and get the deck to Eugene.
That doesn't require any of us to get a signature on anything, do it?
Medical staff.
Okay.
I got a, I've coordinated with the banks to get.
Signature cards.
Cards and stuff like that, you know, be there.
And then uh, one other thing on my side.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, the part-time uh water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Aspect of my role, um. Uh, met with Eugene today and we're quantifying how much we're spending a year. On water main breaks. This is uh, something that's very uh. Important to us, I feel, and I'm going to do further investigation, uh, working with Kyle as well and you. Um. For our fiscal year that just ended April thirtieth. We spent uh ninety four thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents on fifteen water main break. Now, I, we're not the only municipality that has an ancient water system. But I, I just think it opens everybody eyes to, you know, given our budget of what we're spending on that. And if we can figure out a way to uh, figure out a cause and effect. If it has anything to do with the flushing of the hydrants that our fire department is doing to try to keep our insurance rates as low as possible. And get the highest rating for us as residents. I certainly appreciate that. But I think we need to have some discussion with Kyle, uh, probably Bill. And I'd be more than happy to as well, or um. Jenny? To sit down with Chris Weedy and just have the discussion about. Please let us know. Is that such a large item?
I'll, I'll go ahead and reach out with Chief Reedy for the intergovernmental stuff.
Okay, you already working on that?
It's, it's on my radar, yes. Uh, but if you guys can focus. Kind of hone your focus in on the finance aspect of the water and sewage, then I can take over some of that too. I mean, I would talk to you about that.
Right. And then uh, as far as all the pumps that we replace. Uh, the people that are on sewage. Um. There was thirteen homes that were affected last year. That was a calendar year. The water main was our fiscal year. That was eighty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. So.
What was that?
That was replacing the uh pumps.
Okay.
That are going bad in these people's pits that are on sewage. With West Dundee and we need to dig a little deeper on that to see. Um. Are these related to misuse? Of what is being put into those pits?
This is the grinder we've been talking about?
Okay, the ejector. So. That's just something that's definitely on my radar since it's such a big dollar amount.
expense, yeah. That's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars between the two of them.
Okay.
All right.
I think one thing I'd like to add is that some people don't understand in a village, when the village was built, some of our water mains are older than the village. Because some of them, from my knowledge and the people I've talked to, these were used water mains that were bought from the city of Chicago. And actually used to put in here when this village was built. So your, your, your water main may be older than the actual village itself. So it shows you. Uh, as we, our village continues to age, those water mains are even going to become more of a obstacle as we go forward.
Just a greater challenge for us to embrace.
Yeah, and some people don't realize that. And I didn't realize it either until I was on the board and learned that as well. Um, so you know, if we have water main breaks, sometimes especially the east side is. Was the first original part of Sleepy Hollow, so it's going to have a lot older water mains than the west side. So just uh, so people have that as a point of reference.
Yes, that's part of what we're planning, putting water and sewage and finance together is not only just. Checking out these fees, which you already started on your second meeting. Thank you, Bill. Um, but also figuring out ways that we can start budgeting for the water main replacements, because we have. I mean, there've been other things that we've had to prioritize. It's not that it was kicked down the road just willy-nilly previously. It's. Other priorities, but we really, it's push is coming to shove and we've had too many breaks and. And is this ninety-four thousand on the water main breaks? Is that just the physical stuff that we had to replace or did that include the water loss too?
No, it's just the, it's the physical, just the bill from Water Services.
Probably looking closer to two hundred thousand between the two.
I mean.
I have some and everything, yeah, that is going to happen, but we need to quantify, is it? Is it, you know, people that aren't trained possibly um hydrant flushing?
Is it old?
Or is it old type? So we're going to do our best to try to. Bring that dollar amount down.
Appreciate that. All right, uh, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Police and safety, Mister Dattley. Um, welcome back to.
Welcome back to the chief. Exactly. He's been uh, on vacation while deserted. Uh, I don't have anything tonight, but I know Chief has one thing he wants to talk about.
Uh, a couple of months ago, we had a celebration Sergeant Wilson retiring and. She stayed on, on board part-time as a part-time officer to complete the Too Good For Drugs program at school. Um, she had a, we had a little bit of a celebration today for that program. Uh, and so officially tomorrow will be Sue Wilson's last day. So I just want to let everybody know about that.
She's not going to come back next year, is she now?
No, no, with the new, we don't know at this point who the principal is going to be um, at Sleepy Hollow Elementary, so. When, whenever they identify who that person is, I'll sit down with them right away and um, try and make sure that that program goes forward.
I would just like to say with respect to Sergeant Rip Wilson, growing up here. I remember growing up and Teresa Peterson was our president. I thought that was pretty cool. We had a lady president. Then Sally Ride was the first astronaut, first female astronaut to space in the eighties. Loved that. And then Sue Wilson was our first female officer. It's, oh, it was a great time to grow up in the eighties. All right, well, thank you, chief. Anything else?
No, no thanks, Arthur. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Thomas, public build, oh no, that's me, public buildings and environments. It's okay. So uh, I am currently narrowing down some trustee candidates for the public buildings and environmental position. Um, there's a couple of them and we're just trying to figure out what kind of commitments people want. They'd rather be on the committee or trustee. We do have a growing list of volunteers for the environmental committee. I'm up to about three, three dozen people who are interested in participating. But it's all different kind of realms of environmental stuff, so. Uh, this is just a brief. Idea of what I'm looking to start doing in the next couple of years and what I want the environmental committee to focus on. Uh, so I've been speaking with, and also I've been speaking with local environmental nonprofits for assistance. And professional input and feedback and just kind of using those resources. We're going to look at trying to clear the invasives of invasive honeysuckle, bitterroot and buckthorn on Sleepy Hollow Road. And as well as then helping to open up for the tree trimmings when ComEd comes in. Hopefully that'll help them from having to do more hacks and we can have more. Openings, but also replace, I'll talk to the residents where it affects residents' yards. See if we can't find some subs, some proper substitutes that will still look similar to what they have, but they're. Native and they're not going to be invasively aggressive spreaders. Um, then, and but on the other areas, it'll be able to open up a lot of the. The tunnel aspect where it gets dark and so you'll be able to see through the dappling of the oak trees and the sunlight coming through and then all of our natural wildflowers. Like these little purple and yellow ones come up, will be, be able to pop up. They've just been. Smothered completely by the invasives. Uh, also on the environmental committee, because there's never had a clear designation. Environmental committee will be focusing on drainage issues with respect to lawn, people's yards, swales. Because it's not just one house. Usually it's a lot involved and so we need to figure out what the best approach is and I think that's the place to do it. Um, another top topic will be Lake Sharon and the other lakes. So those people who are interested in there as well as watershed education in that realm. And then cleanups, although Bill, we would like you to still remain as your role for the Earth Day cleanup coordinator. Uh, but we'd like to organize more cleanups. People really enjoy them and it gets them out on the weekends and meeting their neighbors and. There's other streets that we could hit up period of each month. And last two things, um. This group would also help facilitate and organize the village native garden, which would then be able to supply. Plugs, seeds, everything to anybody who's interested in doing native uh lawns here and also helping. Prescribe exactly what's going to be permitted for people who want to do native lawns, so we don't just have. Overgrown seed and seeds being thrown. There'll be some structure for people who want to do that, but also protecting those of us who have their nice. Crafted lawns that they'd like to keep. And lastly on that, while reading up on the Buildings and Environment Committee, I learned that they have, that there is actually a tree advisory board. Which I think is very relevant to some of the difficulties we went through with sixteen oh one West Main. And their clearing of the trees, as well as some of the issues we deal with with ComEd, not issues with ComEd, but some of the difficulties residents face trying to. Protect their trees. So the tree advisory board is actually all the trustees and the president. But the committee then would be able to come up with some plans and ideas so that we could then put that into effect. Of regulations and the enforcement. It would also be a plan and it would give us grounds to stop people from taking down their trees. Without. Considering that it's, that it's a tree city designation. And that is it for Buildings and Environment.
I have a question, a couple of questions. For that tree advisory board, can we include Barb in that since she is?
Um, I don't know if I can cross, if I, I'll have to check the structure on it. So just the advisory board is actually the board trustees. Then it would be the committee that would be given, kind of like the planning and zoning commission gives their advice to the board.
Okay.
Um, I. I will have, I'll check into it, but I'll probably have the trustee who. Is the environmental liaison coordinate with Barb, but I don't know if we want the overlap.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll look into that.
And then I have one more question. I noticed when I was out walking that the, um. Gardens, the garden boxes are out here. Is, is anything being done with them or are we going to have?
The ones behind them. So those are part of Service Club with John Florence?
They were out there this weekend.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what the exact climate is, but it was a bunch of people.
Okay, that's, I was just, somebody asked me, I was out walking with some people and they said, oh, the gardens are up and I said, well, let me find out.
Yeah, John Danikowski tends to be the perfect employment that.
Okay. Um, and also with respect to the environment, if there are people who. Have strong opinions in a negative way for some of them. I want all of the opinions, just like with sheds, I want people who are for or against if we do a plea for that. With respect to environment, there's a lot of people who are interested in the native movement. There's a lot of people who really want to have their lawn. And not have seeds lying over. So I do need feedback from everybody. Please ask your friends and neighbors to. Voice their opinion and participate. Um. You said something that I wanted to apply to. Come back, they'll come to me later. All right, uh, building and zoning, trustee Thomas.
I don't have any.
Oh, thanks. Thank you. All right, um, under old business, we have, it was in your agenda packet, the approval of I dot form. The maintenance engineering agreement for the street program. Um. In the amount of.
This is what you would. True.
Okay, approval of the maintenance engineering to be performed by our consulting engineer, the village engineer. It would be in the. I'm sorry, just a moment, please, while I consult. It's in this amount. Yeah, okay, thank you. And that is for the. And that is for the approximate amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty? One hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, construction only, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Canelli, seconded by Diatta, any comments, questions, discussion, Mister Hoff?
This was for all of the designated streets that you have for the road program, correct?
It's for all the streets that we talked about in.
Yep.
Okay.
Deals here, yes. Because the form in the packet was blank, there was nothing filled out on it, if I'm mistaken. I saw your separate sheet that outlined the streets.
Mm-hmm.
But that form was blank, does it have to get filled in? To complete it?
Are you looking at the?
Are you asking me, or you're speaking to Bill?
Either or. Asking.
Uh, so we, we need to pass this in order to approve Jeff, the engineer, to move forward with getting the, obtaining the bids. Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
So you can't, you can't fill out the form until you approve the
I got you.
Motion to get it done.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so, uh, Canelli moved, Diatta was seconded, any other comments, questions, or discussion? Alright, uh, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Mister Hoff?
Yes.
Mister Dattley?
Aye.
Miss Thomas?
Aye.
Mister Canelli?
Aye.
All four in favor, no negative votes, the motion passes. Sign this, and I'll get this to you. Alright, and I don't have any other old business, so I'm moving on to new business, so any new business before us?
I move, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Um, move to adjourn by Diatta, seconded by Thomas. Do you have to do discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those in favor, opposed, say no, or nay. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned at eight-ten.
You know.
They're gonna say no to this, I don't know.